Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call the order of the West Covina City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, April 1st. This is April Fool's Day, so we will see if we have any surprises tonight. Anyway, welcome to everybody. We're going to call the meeting into order, if that's okay. We will start with our invocation by Pastor Mason Okubo from Emmanuel First Lutheran Church, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember James Thomas. So please rise.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father in heaven, we thank you for your many blessings and ask your continued blessing upon our council tonight. We thank you for the people who have given so much of their time and effort to give guidance to our city, and we ask for your continued blessings and wisdom upon them. Be with us, Grant, your Holy Spirit, that we might have a spirit of unity amongst here, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag on the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Hereford.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sykes.
Here.
Councilman Spence.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Warshaw.
Here. We came out from closed session. City Attorney, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the City Council met on three items in closed session, and the successor agency met on one item in closed session. The first item was considered by the successor agency and the City Council was the City of West Covina versus Pacon Imports, and that consists of three bankruptcy cases. The case numbers and names are on the agenda. In that, on those items, the City Council was briefed on the progress of the litigation in this matter by special counsel, and the council gave special counsel instructions on how to proceed. There was no reportable action taken on that item. On the second item, it was a conference of real property negotiators. The City Council was briefed by staff on that matter concerning a potential site for a telecommunications tower at, hmm, here it is, Juan Marado Park, 625 East Merced Avenue. The City Council was briefed by staff and gave staff directions on how to proceed. There was no reportable action taken on that item. On the last item, the City Council considered the records regarding the retention of Squire Sanders as special counsel for the appeal in the case of WCI versus City of West Covina. The council voted unanimously, 5-0, to release those documents as public records, and that was the action taken on that item. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, City Attorney. City Manager, any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes tonight.
Okay, thank you. That concludes all of our presentations and items at the start of the meeting. We will now go to oral communications. Just a reminder that we allot five minutes per speaker for oral communications. First speaker tonight is Irene Fleck.
Good evening. Thank you. Is this on? Oh, okay. I have some library news. This month has National Library Week, and it is April 13th through the 19th, so all the local libraries will have all kinds of special things. The special thing for the West Covina Library will be our big semi-annual book sale. That's on Saturday, April 12th, from 10:00 to 4:00, and we have some really, really fun books for you to come look at and buy. The other thing is with the Earth Day Arbor Day celebration that the city is having, the library will be participating, as will the Friends of the Library, and will West Covina Beautiful in Arbor Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pearl O'Maya.
Good evening, Mayor Hereford, West Covina City Council members, and city staff. I just want to say thank you so much from the East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center for your support of Saturday's Cherry Blossom Festival. Thank you to all the council members for attending. It was fantastic, and all the city staff who were able to attend. We really appreciate it. This has been a wonderful partnership for us. We started this cherry blossom festival back in 2001 with planting the first cherry blossom tree here at the Civic Center, and so we are really excited that it has moved to South Coast Plaza, and that would not have been possible without the city's support. It was a truly successful event. I've talked to our organizations, I've talked to our members, our board members. Everyone was so pleased with how the event was, and so it really was a pleasure to work with Chris Freeland, and also a pleasure to work with the Public Works Department. So I really want to thank everyone. The city staff was there late with us, helping us load and unload, so we really appreciate it. We're looking forward to next year. I'm sorry the rest of our board members couldn't attend. We actually have our board meeting tonight, so I'm going to rush over there right afterwards, but it has been truly a pleasure to work with the city on this program, as well as our student exchange program, so we're looking forward to that as well. So thank you again, and looking forward to adding some cherry blossoms to South Coast Plaza next year, and lots of good things. Thank you again.
Thank you, and I will, all of my colleagues will echo that we had a great event, and thank you for the Japanese Community Center for putting it on, and we look forward to next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Herb Redholtz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to you and City Council, staff, and everybody here. In last Thursday's San Gabriel Valley Tribune, there was a story indicating that the Chevy franchise would be leaving West Covina and returning to the city of Covina. This, to me, is an unacceptable event. It is unacceptable because several years ago, the previous City Council gave, as it turns out, $4 million to Ziad Al-Hassan to move the franchise to the city of West Covina. We all know what has happened since then. That has been, that's the genesis that started the protracted litigation that has gone on for years and years, and cost the city of West Covina, cost the taxpayers millions and millions of dollars, for which, at the end of the day, we, looks like we're going to get nothing when all is said and done. And the icing on the cake is the franchise now looks like it's going to return to Covina where it came from in the first place. So we have nothing to show for this, other than millions of dollars of money that has enriched the attorneys on all sides, at the expense of the West Covina taxpayer. Now, most of this has occurred under previous council majorities. However, if it does come to pass that the dealership returns to Covina, unfortunately, that is occurring on this council's watch. I think it's an unfortunate outcome that speaks to bad decisions, mismanagement of this litigation, bad decisions that were made by the council and senior staff members, and the city attorney. I'm going to preface my following remarks with, by saying that this is nothing personal against anybody, but tough decisions have to be made. West Covina, after all, is, you know, runs like a business, and we elected you to make tough decisions. I think, based on what has occurred over the last several years, there's a couple of individuals that have been in positions of power and influence. I'm speaking of the city manager and the city attorney, and in my view, it's time to make a change. I believe that they are not 100% on board with your commitment as a city council to I believe you need, as a council, to interview, vet, and appoint people of your choosing. It's no different than if you take over a business. You want to bring in your people, people that you're comfortable with, people that you have interviewed, people that share your vision and your view. I don't say this easily or lightly, but there's a history of decisions and advice that has not gone our way. I believe it's time for, we elected new people. For the most part, in the last election, there was a rejection of past policies and decisions made by the voters, and I firmly believe that you need to carry that out further by reevaluating the senior staff in the city, especially the top positions, and bring people on board that you are comfortable with, that you personally selected to work for you and with you for the betterment of the residents and the taxpayers in this city. I won't belabor the point anymore. I just urge you to do that, consider it, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you. John Schumaker.
One of the things that, as we look at all this litigation, and the number is $9.9 million for the auto dealerships, keep asking a simple question. How much of that do we anticipate getting back? Take a look at the $4 million tacked on top of that. We're close to $14 million. Lost tax revenue? How much of lost tax revenue? Is that half a million dollars a year or so for the last five or six years? How much of that are we going to get back? And who made the decision? And who continues to make those decisions? You know, there's a point where, you know, when you dug yourself a hole, you quit digging. You know, the city, when they've dug themselves into a hole, get more equipment so they can dig it deeper. I mean, $14 million over the last six, seven years. What could we have done with that money? Hire 10, 15 new police and firefighters? Kept them employed? Had our city, you know, worked better? Make it safer? Maybe not lay off, you know, close to 100 employees in our city? Some who had worked for the city for 20 years? I'm just not completely understanding what's going on. You know, and sometimes when I hear some of the answers that come from different members of the city staff, I honestly believed in the last election that there would be a change in the tone from people, because I can understand in these tough economic times that you're going to do many times what your boss tells you to do, because there's no place else to go, and it's difficult to do that. So I could understand some of the things that happened in the past, you know, that would continue on. But when there's a change, I would have expected those same people to have somewhat changed their tone, because I'm assuming, and from what I know of you, you don't necessarily practice the same management style. You know, that you want the truth out there, pretty much so, but when half answers are given and those types of things, it is disappointing. And I know, you know, at least three of you are new, and you can't change the world, and you've been here, what, three, four months now? So I understand that it takes some time to do this. But I hope the city does get, you know, to the point where some of the, just the general tone and the tenure and the answers that come back would stop being half answers, you know, or kind of giving the answer and those types of things. I mean, I can respect anybody who gives me an answer, even if it's, they look at me and say, "John, you're crazy. I disagree with you, and this is why," and that's the end of it. Hey, fine, we can go from there. You know, or, hey, the bosses I had, okay. And I'm not going to give away those confidences when somebody says something like that to me, because I do understand the situation. But, you know, $14 million just on that one thing alone. Now you tack on the other, you know, WCI, you know, the millions that were spent there, which in itself was amazing. We'll spend $14 million for reasons that nobody has explained, and we've fought the case for how many years now? Six, seven, eight years? But the prior council, and there's still a member, two members from that council, settled on this thing in six, seven months. Makes me wonder, why would you keep one lawsuit going for $14 million, and another one, you pay out millions of dollars? I mean, it just, you know, the instant thing that makes you wonder is, what is being hid? What was hid? You know, because you never sell, they never sold anything else, and I think the public has a right to know about that. One other last item, I noticed in the Safer grant, is that what it is? That the county came in with a bid about $16.3 million, and considering our budget was $5.8 million, it strikes me as probably pretty much dead on arrival, that proposal. So hopefully we can get back to actually managing the city, you know, since it's more expensive to go somewhere else than to do things the way we do it here. So that's all I have to, I have at the moment, so thank you.
Thank you. Lloyd Johnson.
You know, some time back, I had asked this council with the Public Records Act, I'd asked for two things. The agreement for the city attorney's agreement contract, and the contract with the city of West Covina with Squires and Sanders. Well, I received both of those. So what I want to read here a little bit, it may not make sense at the very beginning, but I hope you bear with me, at the end, it will make sense. This first one has to do with the Al Hansen lawsuits. And I'm not going, I don't want to read all of it, I'm going to read sorts of it, because I will get to the end of it, and you will understand where I'm coming from at the end of it. The one part that says, "The February 12, 2003 Subordination Agreement does not constitute a defense to the judicial enclosure remedy. On February 12, 2003, Pasment and the Council for the Agency executed a subordination agreement providing that the agency would not foreclose upon WCM's indebtedness without a prior written consent of the Chrysler Financial, which has not been obtained. However, this court has previously ruled in connection with the motion for the summary of adjudication, and again finds that Al Hansen's defendants are not third-party beneficiaries of the subordination agreement, which is intended to solely protect the interests of the Chrysler Financial, and they, those have no standings to assert the document as a defense." And this is from the Los Angeles Superior Court. Evidence has further produced at trial that the city is a general law city, West Covina, that the subordination agreement was not signed by the mayor, and that the city has not enacted an ordinance that would allow anyone other than the mayor to sign it as required by Government Code 40602, thereby rendering this a non-effect. Now, this part, this other one I want to read, is dated from the Los Angeles Superior Court, it says Civil Tendative Ruling Result 518-2009. It says, "Plaints submitted evidence that the city is a general law city. The city contracted authority is limited due by the provision of the Government Code 40602, which provide that the mayor shall sign all written contracts and companions made or entered into by the city. On October 4, 1971, the Agency Board adopted Resolution Number 1. The Agency Board enacted that the bylaws of the city pursuant to Article 2, Section 2 of the agency's bylaws, the mayor of the city of West Covina is to serve as the chair of the agency. To the knowledge of Sue Rush, bylaws were not altered or amended between the time of their adoption in 1971 and February 12, 2003, the date of the subordination agreement. Those and at least the inference of the February 12, 2003 Article 2 contracting were in full force. Under the bylaws, chairman of the agency, the mayor, was required to sign the agreement." I can go on and on and on, read this. So what I'm getting down to, when I asked for these two contracts, this is the one with the city attorney, and I have four signatures on it. First one was signed on July 18, 2000 by Mayor Steve Hereford. When they had another amendment on it, it was signed February 1, 2002 by Mayor Ben Wong. The next amendment, on November 1, 2004, was signed by Mayor Mike Miller. And the last amendment, on January 1, 2002, was signed by Mayor Mike Turri. This is the one, contract with the city and Squire and Sanders. Who signed it? City Manager Andy Pasment. There's not a mayor's signature on this at all, this contract. So my question to this council is, since West Covina is a general law city, by being a general law city, the mayor must sign all contracts more than $25,000. Since the mayor didn't sign the contract engagement with Sires, Sanders, and Dempsey, this is an invalid contract. Only the city manager signed it, Pasment, at the time. Squire, Sanders, and Dempsey were paid way over $9 million. I would hope this council will look at this very close. If there is any other engagement contracts with Squire, Sanders, and Dempsey from the time they started doing legal work for the city of the West Covina in any capacity, which is 2006, there must be a signature on the contract by the mayor. And if it doesn't exist, this copy, that should have been given.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, we have received it in five minutes.
What I'm asking for, if there is a contract besides the one they were supposed to give with the mayor's signature on it, that's the one I wanted.
Okay.
And if not, I would hope this council does something about that this is an illegal contract, and we should, and I would hope that we stop at this time doing all further business with sadness and difference. Thank you.
Thank you. William Elliott.
Can't think of a better place than to rather spend my birthday. My name is William Elliott, and I represent concealed carry West Covina. My wife and I have a home and business here, and we always vote. You can find us on Facebook and Twitter at West Covina CCW. Tonight, I want to address the issue of gun violence in our community. Recently, our police chief stood right here and told us not a solitary citizen in the whole city of West Covina was worthy or deserving of a concealed carry permit. Our families are at greater risk due to the early release of hardened criminals flooding into our community from prison realignment. Justice officer strength of our shrinking police department is down 30%. This past week, the West Covina Sizzler was robbed at gunpoint by three dangerous criminals. When only seconds count, the police are only minutes away. The mass shootings in Aurora, Colorado, and Newton, Connecticut leave us all liberal and conservative Democrat and Republican appalled and disgusted at the carnage. Now, some people, and that includes many of you in the room tonight, who want to place the blame on the horror, on 30 round magazines, or semi-automatic rifles, we want to blame something, anything that we can control. But what we really want to ban is violence, and murder, and insanity. We don't talk about that, though, because deep in our hearts, we know the violence, murder, and insanity are built into the human condition, and likely will always be. You know, there are two kinds of animals in the world. There's predators, and there's prey. No one watches a leopard chase down a gazelle and denies that the gazelle has the right to use its hoofs and horns to protect itself from the predator. But there are people in this room tonight, and all across the country, who would deny that same right of self-defense to other human beings. Such people seem to think that this is a way to stop the leopard is to cut the horns off the gazelle, somehow make it easier for the predator, and hope the predator will simply go away. My friends, this is insane. When you make it easier for predators, more predators show up. So let's start with assault rifles, more properly known as semi-automatic rifles. In 2011, the total firearm murders came to 8,583, according to the FBI. Now, during all that time, the total murders committed by rifles, all rifles, not just semi-automatic rifles, were just 323, approximately 3%. Hammers and clubs kill half again as many as rifles do, and hands and feet kill twice as many as rifles do, and knives kill five times as many as rifles do. All rifles combined. Preventable medical errors kill about 98,000 people a year, and medical malpractice kills 12 times as many people as killed by homicide in the United States. That's more than 300 times the number of all killed by rifles, not just so-called assault rifles. Yet no one talks about putting limits on hammers, or knives, or doctors, or hospitals. No one does that, because the good we perceive from hammers, and knives, and doctors, and hospitals far outweigh their perceived harm. And yet studies show that firearms prevent everywhere from 800,000 to 2 million violent crimes every year. The lowest estimate means 100 times more violent crime were permitted with fire, were prevented with firearms than the total number of murders that were committed with firearms. That's 100 times as many. The Second Amendment is not there to protect us from criminals, and those calling for gun control know it. They want to control guns instead of criminals. That's why they want laws that through the stroke of a pen can turn a law-abiding citizen into a criminal. The Second Amendment has nothing to do with target practice or duck hunting. The Second Amendment is there to protect the American people from tyranny. The Second Amendment is there to protect the American people from politicians. The Second Amendment is there to protect the American people from us. Okay, now some politicians say, "We deserve to have a vote on this." Okay, let's have a vote. Those of you that are advocating the infringement of the rights of the people to keep and bear arms need to go to the American people with the 28th Amendment, which would read, "The Second Amendment is hereby repealed." That would be, for the very first time, that would give you the legal authority to do what you've been doing and have been trying to do in direct violation of the oath of office that you all stood in this chamber and took to defend the entire Constitution of the United States, not just the parts that you happen to approve of. So go ahead, go to the people of West Covina and tell them that the ultimate power is no longer to be vested in the people that can no longer be trusted with that power according to you. Tell them only the government can have that power now. You go out and try to convince the people of the 38 states, you're going to have need to get that amendment passed to agree with your opinion of them versus their opinion of you. 12 million unarmed men and women, children unable to resist being murdered by their own national socialist government in Germany. 50 million unarmed men and women, children murdered by their own Soviet government. Political power comes out of the end of a gun, is what Mao said before he disarmed his own people and murdered 80 million of them. Hitler took the guns, Stalin took the guns, Fidel Castro took the guns, Hugo Chavez took the guns. In Vietnam, in the killing fields of Cambodia, you say, "Now, that can't happen here. We're protected." By what? By the Constitution that you're in the process of destroying? Every single one of those men, women, and children was real and precious and irreplaceable as the children at Newton, and as real and as precious and irreplaceable as your own children. More guns means less crime, gentlemen. Make West Covina a shallow-issue city.
Jeff Jefferson-Duroux.
I'm up here to talk about my favorite subject, Cameron and Lark Allen interception, intersection. Pretty much about the idea that it is the quote-unquote "centre" of West Covina. I think that's both false and precarious. And I say false, because geographically, it's not. And it's dangerous, because it's been kind of the catalyst that's been driving the tremendous amount of development in our neighborhood. What's on Cameron and Lark Allen is a park that's sandwiched between an elementary and a high school. It is an intersection that is well-known for having a notorious number of accidents. Now, we're subjected to the consequences of the gymnasium, which back when City Council approved it, we were promised, Mr. Wong was then member of the council, we were promised that there would be oversight. Our experience has been, and it continues to increase, is a tremendous amount of alarms going off from 5:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night that is not being looked into or stopped by our police department, because it is rather trivial, but it is a burden on us who live there. You have a basketball team that gathers there at 5:00 in the morning on Saturdays and Sundays, and many of those alarms are from their cars. As a result, quite often, those alarms go off, and we're subjected to that. I'm not sure why they have the privilege of being there at 5:00 in the morning, but they do. they do. Then we get those miscreants that come in there at 1, 2, 3:00 in the morning and kind of make the park their after-the-party hangout. And not much is done about it. I've personally called the police department numerous times. I have observed from my home, which is 100, 150 feet away from that parking lot, the police drive in, at times have them pour out their beers, get back in their car and drive off, or drive in, they, those miscreants, as I want to call them, jump in their cars, take off, police turns around, goes back, comes back to the station, I presume. And I'm not trying to speak ill of the police. Like I said, this is trivial when considering some of the things that other speakers came up here and addressed, but it's personal for me because I have a family and I live practically in, the park is my backyard, you could say. But I don't want to come up here with just complaints. I want to make three recommendations that I hope council considers. The first one is that signs be put up in the park, especially near the parking area, that addresses, and if there isn't an ordinance, maybe there one needs to be developed, but I know other cities have it, where they, there are signs that are put up that say "uncontrolled alarms," citation for "uncontrolled alarm," for having alarms just going off. And I'm telling you, they are recurrent with a tremendous amount of sounds. You get from beep to boop to, all kinds of sounds come out of that park. So I recommend that some signs go up, making them aware that this is unacceptable to us residents. My second recommendation has to do with also the increase of folks speeding through our parks and in that particular intersection. I don't know if it's a result of the car clubs that are developing, they meet up at Home Depot, or if it's just kids in the neighborhood, but it's very obvious. They go around that corner flying, their wheels are screaming coming out of the park. So I strongly recommend that some speed bumps be put into the park to prevent that from taking place, at least to the extent that it is now. Another reason for it is that many times, folks will drive into the park from the Lark Allen route just to circumvent the light, and they'll go all the way around the park and exit onto the, or I'm sorry, the Cameron entrance and exit on the Lark Allen entrance, circumventing the light, of course, and at the same time, they don't speed, they don't go through there at the posted speed sign. By the way, there isn't one, but I would presume that's probably 5 or 10 miles. They go through there at 25 miles an hour because their purpose is to get to the other side in the direction that they want, quickly.
Jefferson, I think...
I got one last point, Mr. Herford, if I may. My last recommendation is that the park, and I'm not, it probably comes in the form of a question, really, why can we not close the park to vehicles once it closes? That will avoid dumping at the bin, which takes place, the miscreants from coming in at late hours of the night, and a lot of people won't be able to use that as a way of getting around the light. Those are my three recommendations. I want to thank you very much for listening, and I hope you take them into consideration. Thank you.
Yeah, I was up to Kaiser, and I, this person I know in West Covina, he says, "What is this? West Covina's got a $40 million budget surplus?" And it says this on the paper today. He says, "Yeah, $40 million? No, we don't have any surplus. We're broke almost." And he says, "Well, April Fool." But I just wanted to tell you, I'm a realtor, and I was out showing this person a house yesterday, and it looked like it was going to have a lot of offers, but she was talking about how she wants to move to West Covina, and she says, "Everybody wants to move to West Covina." So, I mean, you talk about our negatives, we got a lot of pluses. More people want to move in than want to move out. So West Covina's still a great place to live. I just want to discuss briefly about last week's meeting. Shannon Yasi was, basically, developed a study about inspections for non-owner or occupant. He did a real comprehensive, real balanced study, and I thought he did a real good job. I just wanted to notice that the speakers were there, there was about 24, 20 or more speakers that were opposed to this so-called, they were going to basically have a mandatory inspection, that everybody would pay inspection fees. Not one supporter was there. Also, I own some apartments in the city of West Covina, four blocks, they call it the Woodbridge. There's 117 units, and they proposed a $140 fee every year. That's $16,000 to go through and inspect that thing, and I don't think it'd take two or three or four days to inspect exterior of each building, and I says, "Boy, this is a cash cow for the city." I just don't think we needed it, and fortunately, nobody, the council voted it down. I think it was a 3-2 vote. And there's a lot of discussion, what did bug me so much that everybody opposed it? But then we want to table it, and we want to bring it on. I mean, I thought everybody, people were opposed to it, or there wasn't any support. Why did we have to bring this back? Shannon put a lot of work into that. Why do we have to have staff time when it doesn't appear there's something that people want? Also want to bring up another subject, as in the Tribune. And the headline of the Tribune says, "City spends $3 million in attorney fees," for I don't think the last four or five years. And we got about a $50 million budget. And I look at this, and I say, "Gee, man, the attorneys, I couldn't believe it. That's a business to be in. The legal business. It's a growth business, always growing, always got these fees." But I got to say, this, on this library project, that the city, I guess, the council and the city's attorney, of course, supported and defended, I think we've spent close to $1 million in the thing, and what a frivolous expenditure. I really feel that, like I say, we need to look at our current attorney situation. We have to, like I say, we do have it up for review. Other attorneys will be interviewing for the position. I do feel we got to bring an attorney in that basically, or just cut, keep our attorney costs down, and not have such a, so much frivolous expenditures that we have. So I'm asking that we get, change our, hope we do make a change in our legal staff in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our communications. Couple of the items were political in nature. Mr. Johnson did ask for an explanation as to why the city manager signed that agreement, so I think our staff could provide that to him. Mr. Daru talked about Cameron Park and some additional improvements to the park that he'd like to see. I think we can have staff take a look at those and see what's feasible and give us a memo on that if that's appropriate, and also a memo to Mr. Daru, and then if somebody wants to move forward with those items, I think that'd be fine. And I think from my seat, that's probably the answers. Is there anything you wanted to chime in on? Okay. Seeing none, any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. We have the consent calendar. Anybody wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Do we have a motion? Moved by Councilmember Spence. Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Sykes. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item's item eight, the Community Services Department, host town for the 2015 Special Olympics World Games. City staff?
Yes, I'll have Christopher Leland present the report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The city of West Covina has been approached by the Special Olympics organization as part of their 2015 Special Olympic World Games. As part of the competitions, which are going to be held in Los Angeles from July 25 through August 2, 2015, participants from over 100 countries will be coming to the United States to compete in sports through the Special Olympics. What the Special Olympics has been doing is reaching out to local communities in an effort to create what are called "host towns." These are opportunities for local communities to provide housing, meals, cultural activities, and other events as the athletes try to acclimate to the time differences and the weather here in Los Angeles, and to give them some exposure here to the United States. This all occurs prior to the actual competitions. And so what the Special Olympics has been doing is doing an outreach to local cities to see if there would be interest from communities to be what's considered a "host town." And so that would be a partnership with the city and the Special Olympics to provide that housing, transportation, food, and activities for up to 100 athletes here in our community. What's nice about the program is the timing of it is that just over, a little over, I guess, two weeks ago, we had an opportunity to meet with our West Covina Community Services Group to share with our nonprofit groups in our community that this may be an opportunity for our community to be involved in the Special Olympics. At that meeting, we had overwhelming support from the nonprofits expressing interest from helping from everything from housing to providing meals and whatnot to different cultural activities. In your staff report, it's a little bit of a summary of some of the expectations, and the dates would be from July 21 through the 24, 2015, that these athletes will be located here in West Covina. The city does have use of our transportation funds that allow for us to utilize those funds to provide transportation within West Covina. The Special Olympics provides all transportation to and from Los Angeles, both prior and after their stay here in West Covina, right before they compete in the Special Olympics. In addition, the city has received correspondence, which is attached to your staff report, from the Rotary Club of West Covina Sunrise. They have worked with both the Fairfield Inn and Suites to obtain 50 of double occupancy rooms for a total of 100 rooms for the entire stay of the athletes here in 2015, should the city council support moving forward with this program. That would be the bulk of the cost of the event between the transportation and housing. There could potentially be costs, of course, for any kind of activities or food for those 100 athletes while they're here, but staff is optimistic that based on the response we've already seen, that hopefully other groups will step up and provide those funding. I guess that concludes my report, unless there's any additional questions.
Okay, any questions of staff? Councilmember Spence.
What kind of liability does the city take in if they become a host city?
Great question. The Special Olympics actually has insurance, and they provide us insurance, the most additional
Any other questions? Do we have a motion or any direction from the council? Councilmember Toma.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank city staff for the report. It's very accurate, and for Mr. Leland for summarizing. I agree with the report. Actually, I was there at the meeting with the service groups, and there was a lot of enthusiasm and support for this. One of the big challenges, I think, to being a host town is the housing, that seemed to be the biggest challenge for entering into the, into the host town program, and I think it's fantastic that one of the service groups has already stepped up and offered to volunteer to put up housing, because to me, that seemed the biggest possible obstacle to us doing this. I think this could have the ability to really rally, unify the community overall for obviously a great cause. We spoke to several service club members and other members of our community who are already involved with the Special Olympics in different communities around West Covina and West Covina, so I fully support this program, and I would move to have West Covina become a host town.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that, and along with that, I too attended the meeting with all the service groups, and I too agree that this would be a great event. The only thing I would like to add to the report is, one of the things I'd like to see, if it's possible, is if there are going to be any members from our sister city or in that area that we try to get them here, or any of the other areas that have looked at maybe becoming a sister city to West Covina.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spence, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a question. It's because the cost of the city is actually unknown, and I agree with everything that Mr. Toma said. You know, at the same time, I really, you know, want to know what is going to be the cost to the city, you know, rather than, I understand that there's, you know, a lot of interest and things like that, but interest isn't, you know, cash. So I guess, I guess that's my, my question is, how real that is it that those funds will be covered by other entities, and what will be the contribution from the city to this? Because that would come out of, what fund would that come out of?
Well, staff has estimated a cost of about $40 per athlete, I believe, in the staff report, just to kind of give you a ballpark number. Over those three days, we're saying our exposure could be $12,000 as far as meals. That does give us a little about, a little over two year, or excuse me, a little over a year to start doing the fundraising activities. It would be a general fund or a foundation expense if we did receive donations from some of the different groups. I do believe that at the meeting, for example, St. Christopher's Church said that they would do some fundraising activities. Actually, there was a handful of the groups that said they would start helping do fundraising. In addition, it's providing meals while they're here. Transportation costs, again, those are done through transportation funds to provide busing for 100 athletes around town. It's not that much expense. It'll probably cost a few thousand dollars to do that as well.
So do you, are you committed that we'll get the $12,000? I mean, is that, that's realistic?
To make that kind of commitment, boy, that's...
That's right. Well, I'm just, you know...
It is a goal of the Community Services Department to obtain that.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? We have a motion by Councilmember Toma, and a second by Councilmember Warshaw to host the 2015 Special Olympics participants in the city of West Covina. Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did I hear an aye from Councilmember Spence? Okay, thank you. I have to make sure. I've been told that sometimes our mouths don't move up here, so, anyway, that's a 5-0, so thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our fire department, Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant. City staff.
Oh, yes, is Rick Kennedy here? I don't see him.
I have an idea.
There he is. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight I bring you, the fire department has recently applied, and we were awarded a Staffing for Adequate Fire Safety Emergency Response, or called a SAFER Grant for short. The grant provides for 13 firefighters with over a two-year period of time. The city would receive, if accepted, $4,661,329. 2.3 million would come the first year, and a little over 2.3 million would come the second year. It will reestablish our fifth engine company that was lost due to the loss of the last SAFER Grant. That's nine personnel, three on each shift for three shifts. It'll also provide for a fully staffed truck, three personnel, one for each shift, and then it also further budgets the lost Assistant Chief Fire Marshal position. The grant does not have any matching funds. It does provide for improved response times and a number of fire personnel. However, there are some associated costs related to the grant that the grant does not pick up. The additional 13 fire personnel would enhance the overtime situation to an estimated $250,000 a year for $500,000 for the two years. And additionally, there's a potential layoff possibly at the end of this two-year period of the 13 employees, and that would max out at $304,000. That's if we were to lay off all 13, and we didn't absorb some like we did in the last grant. The city could... The city could fund these increases in overtime through the emergency ground medical transportation reimbursements. That's a new funding source that just started, actually, this year. It's called GMT, and the funding is reimbursed for medical transports and is managed through the state, and it's a government program. We did submit retroactively on March 2nd of this year, and we expect to receive $1,386,365 for the retroactive portion. Additionally, we're going to be submitting for this current year and several years out. We conservatively estimate, estimate about $325,000 per year as a continued revenue source. And the total for the three-year period of time, given the two years and the, and the third year, would be a total of 2.3 million, just over $2.3 million. This does offset some of the operational costs, or could. However, you can also use this GMT money to offset some other revenue, possible deficits from the $900,000 that's anticipated for PERS, which $350,000 is attributed to the fire department. But the positives for accepting the grant is that it brings us back to a 2008 pre-recession model of 80 sworn personnel. It improves our overall response time from five minutes and 16 seconds to four minutes and 44 seconds. It also improves our 90th percentile response time from six minutes and 52 seconds back down to six minutes and 20 seconds. So it increases our daily staffing, it increases our effectiveness in saving lives and property. Also, it provides for the safety of our firefighters when we go on the emergency, because we have more staffing to get to the emergency in a timely fashion. It provides, as I said, for a two-year period, and importantly, it increases our staffing on the truck company so that we have a, creates a safer operational situation for our truck services. And it also provides for the engine company that I spoke of earlier, the fifth engine company that we lost, that provides for Fire Station 4 coverage and puts water back into that district so that the residents in that area do not have to wait for a second in engine to provide water to the fire. It also reinstates the eliminated Assistant Chief Fire Marshal position, as I had mentioned, to assist in the management and the fire prevention areas of the department. It basically provides for, provides for the community protection for medical fire and other related hazards in our community. Importantly also, the Safer Grant, as in other communities, has been used, should the city ever decide to contract out with the LA County Fire, it, in other communities, has been used towards that contract fee. Some of the negatives is that it's a short-term fix for a situation that has a long-term need of the department. It does increase overtime, as stated previously, and it increases the overtime expenses that could project into deficit, budget deficits, if we don't use some of the other funding sources. It also could lay off, we could lay off up to 13 personnel at the end of the grant. Within that two-year period, we do expect vacancies, and we currently have vacancies, that some of these folks could fill. But the potential layoffs are there, and we want to budget accordingly, so there is a maximum of $304,000 for the 13 people to cover them for the maximum of one year of unemployment. City may use GTM funds for other increased overtime costs if they want to, and the GMT can also be used to offset other expenses in the next fiscal year. Another funding source I'd like to bring to your attention, however, though, is our ability to cover some of the overtime costs and that by not filling our current vacancies. Currently, we have vacancies in the Assistant Chief position, the Captain's position, firefighter paramedic position, and that. When we backfill those folks with overtime, it actually saves the city money, because now we're not paying, we're paying overtime, but we're not paying for all the PERS and the medical and the dental and all those other benefits. So actually, we did an analysis, and depending on how many vacancies we leave vacant and just use overtime to cover, anywhere from $97,000 to $269,000 per year. So that'll assist with the GMT to fund this. I need to bring your attention that the fire department has received the unofficial proposed feasibility study for contractual services with LA County, which was requested by the Firefighters Union and authorized by the council back in June 4th of 2013. That proposal came in and indicates a cost of $16.2 million for the contractual services. The feasibility study is anticipated to go to the Board of Supervisors on April 8th, next Tuesday, and for their consideration. And again, I'd just like to remind you that should the council ever decide to go county down the road, that those funds of the grant have been used towards the county contract. We're looking for a direction to either accept our 2013 Safer Grant or reject the grant and, and continue with the current fire department deployment model. That concludes the staff report, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a...
Councilmember Warshaw?
Thank you for that report. I, I thought it was, I'm going to say pretty thorough, because I do have a few questions on it.
Sure.
Number one, and I'll ask this part last, is for your recommendation, and it's strictly your recommendation. Number two, how many vacancies do we currently have? And if you are recommending this, how many are you, do you consider to be okay not to fill? Secondly, when you talked about the emergency ground transportation, or...
Funding.
Yeah, the funding.
Yes.
You said it could be used for other things. Does it have to be used for fire, or does it go into the general fund, or where does that go?
No, it can be used in, in the fire service, but it doesn't necessarily have a, you know, some funding sources have to be used for specific things, just like the grant has to be used for the 13 personnel to supplement the fire staffing.
So could it be used for a fire vehicle or something?
It can be used for a fire vehicle. In fact, with 2.3 million, you could cover the overtime, you could cover the cost of a truck at $130,000 a year for 12 years, and, and some others.
Okay, and also, can you tell me, if we were to approve this, what would you, where would you expect these firefighters to come from? Would they come from people that we lost before? Can you also tell me what happened to most of those people that we did lose? And what would you expect to hear from these people if they lost their jobs in two years?
Okay, I'll address your last question, and I'll go back to your first one.
Okay.
As far as the, what happened to them, two of them were hired right away. We lost six, because the other six, because the 2010 grant had 12 people, 12 firefighters. We did not, we did put in for a 2012 grant, but we did not get that grant. Out of those 12, we absorbed six into the fire service through attrition from retirements and such. Out of the other six, two are currently employed in other fire departments, and were employed pretty quickly. Two are in paramedic school and hoping to come back to us as paramedics, because our current model doesn't have a spot for firefighters, but we have vacancies for firefighter/paramedics. The other two are still looking for employment as well. Our goal would be to hire those two firefighters as soon as we can process them. We'd still have to take them through a life scan and such. Then we would also offer employment to the two firefighter/paramedics, or the two other firefighters that are going through paramedic school, and it would be, we could offer them firefighter positions, or we could give them a tentative agreement to, once they finish paramedic school and complete that process, we could hire them back as paramedic firefighters. Your first question was how many vacancies? We currently have three, one captain, well, four actually, fire chief. Fire chief and assistant chief, a captain, and a firefighter/paramedic. I anticipate another firefighter/paramedic opening pretty soon, so we would have two of those. We would be able to go ahead and, one part of your question was how can we, how many we could sustain and still have a good effective workforce. One or two vacancies per position is typically very easy to backfill with overtime, because people sign up for the overtime and that. There is a point where you have to be careful, and we've had that in the history since I've been here since 1972. We've had that history where we were forcing our guys to, our folks to work 120 hours at a time, five, six days, when we were really searching for enough candidates. Yeah, but in, in the current model that we have, we have more than enough to backfill all that. Did I answer all your questions, except for the last one that you're going to ask me?
Recommendation.
Okay, my personal recommendation. My personal recommendation would be accept the grant. It gives us two years to look for longer-term solutions to staffing our department. It also, during that time, reduces our response times, and seconds count. One of the speakers talked about seconds count. Seconds count in our business. We work diligently to save a second off of our response time. During that time, we could increase our, improve our response times, and also provide safety for both the public and, and our firefighters as well. So it gives us time.
Thank you for being so candid with me.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Spence.
The question I had, you know, because when I look at the fiscal impact in here, and it talks about the negatives of accepting the grant, it talks about the increases in overtime costs for the two-year period, which you just said is a benefit in some ways if we don't fill some of those positions. And, and so I guess that's not a complete negative based on what you just said, and I guess my question is, is how is that decision made that we're going to go with overtime for like the fire marshal position or for those things? Who makes that decision, and how do we figure that into the budget process?
Typically, typically, we hold, the fire chief will have so many vacancies, and, and they're obviously always approved by, by the city manager and assistant city manager in this point. As long as we can, like, like the, like I told Councilman Warshaw, as long as we can maintain a good, effective workforce in that, and we can get callbacks and people to staff appropriately, it does save, you know, in this particular instance, $97,000 to $269,000 a year, which helps cover some of those overtime costs, and, as well as with the GMT money. Did I answer your questions, sir?
Any other questions? I had a couple of questions. What, what will the model be? I mean, where will the, I don't understand, fifth engine truck? So we're going to have an engine truck at every station, and then the ladder truck will be kept where?
Okay, in the 2008 model, before we started our cutbacks, we had, we had five engine companies, one at each fire station throughout the city that are strategically located for quick response times. We kept the truck company at Station 2. There was a time in our history that we had it at 4s for implementation, but we always had an engine and a truck up until the cutbacks that we had. The truck services the whole city. Well, actually, all the engines service the whole city when they're out of, out of district and covering each other on different alarms. But the truck company provides a support to all the other engine companies on all kinds of hazardous operations, whether it be a fire or cutting people out of cars, things like that. So we'd have an engine at each station, we'd have the truck at Station 2, and then we have three rescue ambulances, one's at Station 1, one's at Station 2, and one's at Station 4, also strategically located for quick response times.
And for the public's benefit, can you describe which stations are 1, 2, 3, 4?
Oh, Station 1.
And then, Rick, the follow-up to that would be, what station right now doesn't have water of the engine?
Yeah. Right now, we, we had to go into this deployment model because of the financial constraints that we have. We have an engine at Station 1, an engine which is over here off of Cameron and Sunset. We have an engine along with a rescue squad. And then over here at Station 3, up on Puente Avenue, we have a single engine. Each engine has three people on that, a captain, an engineer, and a firefighter/paramedic. At Station 2, right now, we have just an engine and a rescue. And then at Station 4, we only have a truck company. So we don't, our truck company is a ladder truck that does not carry water on it, and that's one of our concerns. So the folks that are in, the residents that are in Station 4's district, should we have a fire, whether it be a car fire or a structure fire, the truck would respond and try to perform the measures they can for life safety, but we would be waiting for one of the other engines to arrive to actually apply water to the fire, or to hold back the fire while we do our other rescue portion. And then Station 5, down on the south end of town as well, oh, Station 4 is over on Fair Grove and Azusa. Station 5 is down in, at Nogales, and down at the southern portion of our town, and that is one single engine company and with three people. Station 4, I forgot to tell you also, that it has a truck company, but it also has a two-person rescue squad, just no water.
And Rick, can you also expand on the mutual aid that we get from LA County and, and how that benefits us?
Yes. Over the years, LA County has received contracts with all the surrounding cities. So now, in today's market, we are surrounded by LA County Fire, whether they be working for Walnut, or the city of Covina, or the city of Ballin Park, whatever it may be. Now, we have a mutual aid agreement with them, where we're borderless, if you will. Depending on where the call comes in, we respond to them, they respond to us. Right now, under the current model, however, county is responding into our district, our city, four times that of us responding out of the city, due to our deployment model that we currently have. Right now, they seem to be fine with that. If they ever look at the numbers, or they're watching this, maybe I'll have a, an appointment tomorrow, and they'll want to reciprocate a little more evenly. We respond back and forth, and that could be on structured fires, could be on rescue calls, whatever it may be.
Okay, yeah, I'm going to support this, but explain to me the logic, because I've never quite understood why the ladder truck is at the Azusa, the Station 4 station, which is in the middle of the city, but most of the ladder calls, I think, are on the freeway or high-rise buildings. They're not, they're not necessarily, I mean, I understand their mechanics and they do stuff like that. And then we take the water away from Station 4, which is pretty close, actually probably the closest to the hillsides, and so I'd like to understand that a little bit better.
Okay. Like I stated earlier, in, in the staffing model with the grant, and in past history, we would have the truck at Station 2. One, because of the commercial side of that, two, because we can jump on the freeway right there, not only manage all the freeway incidents of assisting our customers, but also getting to the other end of town in a, in a timely fashion. Right now, the truck is down there because we only have five units. We lost an engine company. So we didn't want to close Station 4, or just leave just a rescue there, so we moved the truck down there. Whether you move the truck down there, or you move the truck into twos, or ones, or threes, or fives, one of those districts are going to be without water, unfortunately. And that's one thing that we're trying to do with the grant, and that is to get water back into that district so that all districts have water in them.
Yeah, I understand, and I... Yeah, I understand, and I appreciate that, except in two years, we're going to be looking at the same situation, and
Yes, we are.
I just, you know, I understand keeping a truck at every station, but I think there's, you know, the hillsides are probably more prone, as we've seen in foothills, to some fires, rather than maybe some of the flat areas, but that's just my perspective. Any other questions by any councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Councilman Warshaw.
You mentioned that it's about four to one now, under our current model. Under the old model, what was the ratio?
It just depends on which old model. Our previous, the previous model to the model that we have now, we actually were running a light force, instead of a separate truck and a separate engine, and under that model, it was actually three to one. In past history, when we've gone to what I would call the safer grant model that we've had in the past, it's been more, either one to one, or a two to one. Some years, it's been closer, especially when counties audited, and then we fixed up the borders a little bit, but typically, one or two to one, under the safer grant model.
City manager, comment?
Yes, Rick, can you also comment on the possibility of, if we were using the GMT funds to perhaps purchase a new ladder truck with water, how would that affect your operations? You know, assuming that the safer grant was not provided, you know, what would that do to the organization, and does that improve anything or not?
Well, it assists, and in some degree, and then also, if you look at the funding of the GMT funding of 2.3 million, a ladder truck, if you financed it for 12 years, the life of a ladder truck, is going to cost about 130,000 a year. So if you were to look at the overtime cost, the cost of a truck, and the 350,000, if you take the 2.3 million, it should cover that through the grant period. Now, when, in our five-year replacement plan that was developed when I first got here, that was one of the first things the city manager asked me to do, we have a quint truck in the CIP for next fiscal year. This year was two ambulances, which we purchased and should take delivery in about a month, a month and a half. Next year will be a truck, it will be a quint, so it will have water. So it would provide water in a district. However, your response times would still be the same, simply because you still only have five responding units, rather than the sixth. That helps and increases response times. It also gives you the grant funding compared to just putting a truck in service that has water, instead of one that doesn't. It still provides more manpower, staffing for your fires and such. When we pretty much get a single alarm fire in the city, it drains our resources, and we have to rely on county to backfill our stations, because it takes up all our units. At least with this staffing model, when we roll on a first alarm and utilize every vehicle on that, we still have one engine that's available within our community to respond to the next fire, or to the next car incident, or the next accident, and whatever. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to accept the 2013 Safer Grant. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Warshaw. I just wanted to say, first off, this Safer Grant was applied for by our fire department, and I appreciate the effort, and I do want the additional service in the city, and I think the residents want the additional service too. However, it's so unfortunate that the funding is only a grant. It's only two years, it's federal dollars. It just, it just kind of slaps at me that this is how government operates, rather than, you know, even if they were to just give us a smaller amount over a longer, or forever, I mean, that makes more sense to me, because we go through this every two years, where we have to reduce forces and go back to the old system again, and it's just, it's difficult to see these things come through as grants and not as continuing funding, so. But with that said, I don't look a gift horse in the mouth, and I think the service that we will have for our residents is beneficial for this, and so that's my support for it. So with that, we have a motion, we have a second. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you say aye?
I believe there's a code that says that someone is not saying anything, so yes, but.
Well, yes, but the city clerk scolded me tonight and said
Well, he did well.
Okay, so that's a five-o vote, thank you. I don't know, might have to go to roll call votes here. All right, next item on the agenda is the mayor/council member reports. Do we have any AB 1234 conference and meeting reports?
Well, I know that
Councilmember Spence.
Yeah, Councilman Sykes may want to talk to it, but we were both at the San Gabriel Transportation Forum, dealing, where dealt with a lot of different of the transportation issues, from goods movement to bicycles, to all those kinds of things that took place at Pacific Palms, and there are a lot of the different individuals and organizations that were involved in dealing with those kinds of transportation issues, which is important here, obviously, in West Covina.
Okay, Councilmember Toma.
Yeah, I'm not sure, we had a couple of committee meetings, but those don't, do those fall under the AB, therefore later on? Thank you.
These are pretty much for anything that's funded by the city, the public has the right to know, and so that's why they report it. Mayor Protem Sykes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to add that it was, the keynote speaker was LA Mayor Garcetti, and his approach is something that we need regional, in that he not only talked about how our fates were all tied together, but he in particular talked about when he went to Mexico. So he's not just talking about a regional approach. When he went to Mexico, he worked for not only LA, but Pasadena and other businesses, and goods and services throughout the region. And I think that's a good thing, instead of us scrapping and fighting for everything, we're trying to do this thing in a more collective, harmonious manner. And he also talked about, there was a measure R, was talked about, where taxpayers from the LA County, LA Countywide, we taxed ourselves to try and deal with the aging infrastructure, and there's something like 40 billion that is going to be shared for about the next 24 years. And so it's just an idea of taking those funds and trying to make it work regionally, and just instead of one group trying to grab it all, we're trying to work collectively. Most of the folks there, and that's what I took away from it that was most important for us. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to council, city council requests for reports, studies, or investigations. We have, I think, three from Councilmember, Mayor Protem Sykes. Item 10, request for, to instruct city staff to prepare a report restricting private buses, tour buses from loading and unloading on city streets. Council, Mayor Protem Sykes.
I've observed that during peak evening traffic hours, we have some tour buses that decide to just stop along Azusa, and unload and load, that would be on Azusa, north of Amar Road. And if you've been down there at that peak hour, even with the new widened traffic lanes, we still have heavy traffic congestion. And when you take away the lane nearest the curb line, it creates a fairly noticeable gridlock, as well as it becomes a sort of a safety situation, a traffic safety matter, when people are trying to get around this bus that's just sitting there. And it's not one of our foothill buses, this is a private tour bus. And also, the fact that they're sitting there utilizing our streets, and the taxpayers are paying for that, and the bus companies appear to be getting a free ride. And then we also have times when you see that if they do decide to get off the street, that they may just invite themselves into the nearby businesses' plazas, and we have restricted parking, just because the way the design of the city's been going with the limited parking, and so they oftentimes appear to do this without permission. And that impacts the businesses, as well as the folks who come to patronize the businesses. And so I'm hoping that we can get some support to research and see how other cities, I know St. Gabriel is one, that has a huge problem like this, and they've moved forward to address it, and I'd like to see how we can address it, especially the situation with Azusa, our streets in that area. Thank you.
Okay, this is a request for an additional report. City manager?
Yes, at the time this report was drafted, we did not speak with the police chief. However, he's indicated that he has some information that he could provide the council tonight on this matter, and if I can just ask him to come on down and to speak to this matter.
While he's coming down.
Councilman Warshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Sykes, you stated they were on Azusa, was that, were they stopping at a bus stop, or were they just stopping along the street? Do you have any ideas where?
Where I see them most, and where I hear about it, when people, other people call me and say, hey, there's a bus stop in traffic, just south of, one of their favorite places seems to be the Carl's Juniors, just south of the Carl's Juniors, just pull up and just park. So they're not even using the cement pad, which helps with the weight factor and the damage into the street, they just seem to pull up right near that, just south of the Carl's Juniors, most of the time. And I've even seen them on the weekend, but I didn't say too much about the weekend. They're there on the weekends also. But when you're there, and you, you know, you see people trying to negotiate during the week in this peak traffic hour, it becomes definitely a problem.
Chief? It's our police chief, Dave Faulkner.
With respect to Mayor Protem Sykes's request, the current vehicle code allows for citations of people for impeding, under 22400 of the vehicle code, anytime you stop at a roadway that's not made for stopping, you're not able to pull over to the right, the law enforcement officer that's in the vicinity can certainly stop and take enforcement action. I would encourage citizens, if they're going to see this, that they give us a call, let us respond out and take the appropriate action. As you know, the roadway down in that area is not wide enough, there's no parking in the side streets, simply because of the businesses on both sides, and it certainly does, as I think the Mayor Protem pointed out, does create somewhat of a hazard. And if that's the case, we'd be certainly able to respond out, take enforcement action if that comes down to it.
Mayor Protem, do you think we need a report, then, if they can just cite the people?
I would think the site, citing them now would help to get that out to the public, that when they see this, to call. But there's also the impact to the businesses that I mentioned. The same damage occurs if you own property there, in one of those plazas, and that truck comes, I mean, the bus comes in and sits, it does the same kind of damage to your parking lot as it would to the street, because they're both, the asphalt and not the cement, for the most part. And then there's also, I think, the businesses should have a right to make sure that these folks approach them and ask for permission. They shouldn't just be there on their own, because they take up more than a few parking spaces. So I would appreciate if we could get that, get that done for the businesses too, since we're a business friendly city.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Warshaw.
For the chief, while you're still here, if a private bus stops at a bus stop, is that legal?
As long as it doesn't impede traffic, there is some acceptance of that, normally, because I think the traveling public expects buses to stop in certain areas, specifically those that are marked. But I think in regard to Mayor Protem's question, we can also have our service area lieutenant reach out to some of those businesses and encourage them to call us as well, should they see something that maybe a private person doesn't see traveling down the roadway, and then we can take enforcement action as well.
Okay, and then I guess my question would be, do we, isn't it up to the private landlord of the property, not even the business owner, as to who can use that parking lot to actually stop, and they're not stopping in a, naturally, a space? So isn't that more of a civil matter than?
If it occurs on, if it occurs on private property, certainly it is. The enforcement action, unless it's a dedicated lot, which would be similar to the mall where the roadways are enforceable, private property is not, with very few exceptions. From what I understood, this is occurring on the street, is that correct, rather than on the private property?
The main concern started with seeing it on the street, that was my first focus. But as you think about it, since we are studying the issue, I have seen the tour buses in various business parking lots.
Now, the private parking lots, certainly, that's up to the business owners, as you mentioned. On a city, a city street, we can take enforcement action, not necessarily just because somebody calls, but we see it, and we see it as an impeding issue, we can certainly cite the bus driver.
So if I may ask, then, if it is private, it's strictly a civil matter?
Yes, well, it can be a civil matter, if they call us, we'll try to mediate that with the business owner, and do our best to try to get them to move along. But many times, these tour bus companies, from my experience, will come in, people will offload, go into the businesses and patronize them, and then get back on the bus and go out in the street. So it's a balancing act, I think, that we need to find between enforcement and also working with our business owners.
Okay, any other questions for chief?
I guess I'm a little unclear on the private parking lot stuff.
Yes, sir.
I mean, if a private, if a landlord calls and says, I have a problem with this bus that's parked here, I mean, do we go out there, or do we not go out there, or what happens?
No, we would certainly respond, but we would do our best to try to mitigate it, because it is private property, as Councilman Warshaw pointed out, and the enforcement action is very limited to what we can actually have them do.
Right.
Usually what will happen is we'll interview the business owner, go out and try to
Right.
get somebody to go along.
And if it's parked unsafe, or doing something like that, then there would be an issue or something, right?
They would have to call a private property tow, and then we would stand by while they towed it if it came down to that.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Because, you know, I'm inclined to oppose this request, because I think there already are laws on the books to deal with it, and, you know, I see, I don't see how we can draft an ordinance that would say, okay, this landlord, you know, particular business, you know, I see bus tours stop at the Fairfield and the, you know, the Hampton Inn, and I'm thinking, there's 40 people paying a hotel tax, and there's 40 people, you know, that are eating at the restaurants there, and, you know, supporting the businesses. So I'm, you know, that Carl's Jr. happens to be the second closest to my house, so I'm very familiar to the area, and I'm looking forward to the Del Taco going in in April, but, which will be the only one in West Covina. So I'm very familiar with that corner, it's very close to my house. But, you know, I struggle to see how, you know, a code could improve upon something, one, where we already have a law that can be enforced, and two, where I don't see how, you know, prohibiting buses from offloading on the streets, and then prohibiting them from offloading in parking lots, means there's no place for them to offload and unload. And so I think, you know, we have to, you know, I don't see how we can do that, so.
Mayor Protem.
That's exactly why I'm asking for the study, to see how in particular, St. Gabriel, the city of St. Gabriel is handling, since they have such a huge problem, that they were forced to make a law. So this is just more or less preemptive, in seeing what, how it's handled by other cities. Since, like you say, you can't see how it's done, maybe we can see how they do it. Thank you.
Chief, thank you.
You bet, sir. Have a good evening.
Okay, we, any other discussion? Do we have a motion? Councilman Toma.
So I just have a question, then. So is the, is the idea to be a little bit broader than loading and unloading on city streets? Because it sounded like maybe the city streets issue was answered, but it sounds like maybe your question is a little bit broader about, well, is about what St. Gabriel did with respect to their streets, but also includes these, the parking lots situation too?
If we could, I'm not, of course, as they pointed out too, they weren't trying to put these people out of business. They just wanted to have positive, make sure that the positive impact would be emphasized, and to eliminate the negative. And that's really, really what St. Gabriel, the city of St. Gabriel was trying to do also, is just to look at what their, what their community was complaining about, how it's clogging their streets, and doing damage, et cetera. But again, it's not the focus to put these folks out of business, it's just to make sure that the positives that are there are for all around, for the entire community. And again, just to try and get a research to see how they handle it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? We have a motion. We have a motion?
My motion is to ask staff to research, see how they handle their entire situation with the tour buses, and then we can decide, once we get the information, how we want to go. We can leave it as what the chief said, which is very good. We've just got to make sure we get troops to respond and take them away from other things. And then also, I think, this goes out on the internet, so hopefully they'll be volunteering to clean up in their act and to approach the businesses and see how they can work with the businesses, as what Councilmember Spence talked about, is that that's a busload of folks getting off, getting off the bus. Hopefully they can spend money there and help the business absorb the impact that's made by the buses, not just pick folks up and drive them away to the casinos or wherever they tour, and not leave something with the, with the business that they're using to load these people on the bus. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to get that motion, I think it was, to bring back the St. Gabriel ordinance and some additional information?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we have a motion to bring back that ordinance to review by the council along with any additional information the police department has, or city staff has. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I think it's a relatively limited impact on the staff to get that information for, so I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, let the record reflect, Toma, Hurford, and Sykes in favor, and Warshaw and Spence in opposition. Okay. Next item on the agenda, item 11.
So it was 2-2-0?
Three-two.
Oh.
You're really, yeah.
I'm just saying.
So it's fresh made buns. Carl's Jr. I was thinking about. Okay. Request from Mayor Protam Sykes for, to examine opportunities to hire part-time code enforcement officers. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have seen for quite some time that we have been falling short of our mission, especially when it comes to the code enforcement situation. To have one member of our staff for code enforcement, that's just unacceptable to me. And so I've been doing what I can to brainstorm. When Senate, when immediate past Mayor Sanderson brought up the idea of the rental's law, I supported that idea of looking at that because it would be some way of finding out how to make our code enforcement more robust. I mean, if you talk to people that have been here for 30, 40 years, living in the city, the three biggies as to why they moved to the city, was simply a strong police force, strong fire service, strong public safety period. And then you have to add into it the standards and quality of our lives and the value of our property. It's impacted by our codes, and that's what makes us different from some of our neighbors, is the codes and the standards that they, that we have. And the standards don't mean anything if you can't enforce those standards. And right now, 17 square miles, one code enforcement officer, doesn't take much to review by looking around town and seeing that we need to enhance our code enforcement. So this is an idea to do that, that I think can allow us to stay within the budget that we're now dealing with. And perhaps in the future, we can get back to where we were, but we know reality is we've got to do more with less. And I think this is an opportunity to study and see how we can do more with less. Thank you.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Warshaw.
Mr. Mayor, although I think it's important that we try and get some more code enforcement officers, whether that's full-time or part-time, we are starting our budget process, and I think we need to look at the budget before we start talking about this. I would entertain it if we can't find a way in our budget process to do it, but I think at this time, it's, it's, there's too many other things going on, and it's not needed at this point.
Mayor Protam Sykes.
Mr. City Manager, could you address that idea of budget and how we can do both at the same time? Sort of like chewing gum and dancing, you know? Thank you.
Well, as you, as reading the report, it has been one of my priorities to try to fund another code enforcement officer. In order to do that, we are already meeting with the departments to determine how some of the staffing in that particular department is, is paying for a lot of the vacancies that currently exist. It is possible that we could fund another code enforcement officer in this next budget. However, we also need to address the $900,000 deficit that we anticipate starting off just due to the increase in PERS. So with the whole budget process, it would be prudent to, for me to bring back this as part of the budget and seeing if there's a way that I can balance the budget, as well as to, as to address the many goals that the council has identified, including the, any code enforcement officers.
Okay, Councilman Spence.
I would also add to what Mr. Warshaw said, is that we're going to have a goal-setting session as a council, right, in two weeks? You know, and I think this should be part of that discussion. I mean, I, I may not, you know, I want to have the whole context of what our goals are and what we're looking at in the budget, if we talk about, you know, is it a detective or is it a part-time code enforcement? Or I'm even willing to look at contracting out code enforcement or some of code enforcement, you know, to increase, you know, even temporarily. There's companies that do that for other cities, you know, so I think we have to have everything on the table. But I want everything on the table kind of at the same time, so I can look at it all and see how it fits into the budgetary stuff we got. That's where I'm kind of at.
Okay. Councilman Toma.
Yes, I also, I mean, I applaud Councilman Sykes for problem solving on the code enforcement issue. I do think that that discussion ought to happen in the budget, and if it could be wrapped into that discussion about what the alternatives are for a code enforcement officer, understanding that there's no guarantee depending upon what all the council's goals are for different staff positions and so forth. But I do think that is a natural thing that should come up within the budget process. I actually originally thought that this was to talk about some sort of volunteer code enforcement, but I remember there were issues with that, although I think the problem solving and thinking of different ideas is something that we ought to be doing. So I would ask, maybe if we could just wait until we have more information and can talk about it within the greater context.
Okay. Mayor Protam Sykes, do you want to move forward? It sounds like maybe everybody wants to wait till the budget. You can make a motion if you like.
As always, of course, whatever the majority wants, but I, my understanding of what the city manager was saying is that as he's preparing the budget, he can look and see how part-time staff versus full-time staff is going to fit within the budget model that we're going to try to create. So I'm just thinking that if we can, again, I want to let him know that we're considering this kind of idea that could be incorporated into our budget to help us balance the budget. And I would think that he would be more comfortable if this is all there, that we are looking at this and seeing what it's going to cost to incorporate one or two part-timers additional to the one that we already have, plus he's trying to put into the budget the one full-time staff that he can see at this moment. And I just think that's just going to give him more flexibility with getting some troops on the ground to do code enforcement. And so that's why I was asking for this. I'm sure it's not going to be done until after we do get a good look at the budget. Thank you.
Okay, so I think if I heard you right, we're going to wait till the budget, is that okay? We're going to, you're going to look at it during our goal-setting and the budget process? I, to be honest, I think it's going to come quick enough anyways because we're going to get into budget here probably in May, I would assume, or June, so I think everybody shares the same concern, just a timing issue. Okay, so we'll wait on that one. Next item on the agenda is item 12. That is a consideration of a mobile phone app. Councilman, Mayor Protam Sykes.
Again, just talking to folks that are out there in the business that we're in, providing services to our community, some of them have noticed that they're able to incorporate into their service model the apps for the smartphones. We have thousands of these phones that are out there, and again, I'm just trying to figure out how we can facilitate, make it easier for those thousand eyes that are out there that can easily, and I want to say this, easily, where we can facilitate their ability to report to us what they see, whether it be potholes, graffiti, other issues that we service, sewer maintenance, you name it. Other cities are using this type of model, and, but again, it has to take the buy-in of the public because it's not free. And if we do move to this, we'll have to see how the public responds, and it has to be a cost-effective look at it. But I do know that this would, modern technology oftentimes does facilitate our ability to get the job done. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Councilman Spence.
Well, I don't have a problem, you know, dealing with mobile apps, and, you know, I'm a partner in a company that developed a mobile app for some functions. And just one of the things I'd like to include in this is rather than a mobile phone app, because most of the functions of the city, with the exception of like maybe the calendar or where the city parks are and stuff, most people want to give me know where they are, maybe it would help guess. But, you know, it's a deal with the issue of optimizing for mobile, the website services, because most of the time, people aren't going to report, I hope, you know, I don't know if there's pothole scouts going out trying to find potholes to report them all, maybe there are, maybe they keep reporting the same one over and over again, or things like that. But for the most part, it's a one-time or a second-time or a third-time service. So if the websites are optimized for mobile, smartphones can easily do that, and that's usually a cheaper option, and it's easier on the consumers because they don't have to download an app and deal with all those kind of interfaces. But the website's optimized for mobile so that people can use it on their browsers and tablets and, so if that was part of this, it was, you know, because that, I think, would probably be a more practical function for it than download, than some app, some developing an app and downloading and maintaining it. It just seems, if this was part of that, I mean, you can look at the app as long as you look at optimizing the websites for mobile. Does that make some sense?
Councilman Warshaw.
Mr. Chung, we've been working on our website now. Has this been implemented in any way, shape, or form at this point?
This, as part of the website design, we would certainly look at what council members, Councilman Spence raised, as well as mobile apps. So we would be looking at, as far as integration into that, and I think it's very important that if they're not integrated, then you, then you have a separate module in itself that's not really working together. So we would be looking at both the mobile phone app and also the web base. And I do understand that we have already communicated and discussed this, and there may be some conflict as far as whether they work together or not that we'd need to discuss. I did talk with some other cities as far as what other cities are doing. La Puente is, you know, they have a mobile app, which I forget what it is, but there's also like other apps that are out there that we would be looking at. So as far as a website design, we would incorporate this as part of that as well, as far as the possibility. With the website design, when we come back to the council, if there's any additional cost in implementing things, we're certainly going to need further guidance and consideration from the council at that point in time.
So what you're telling me is, is really we're already looking at this, so it's not something special that we need, and you will be coming back when you come back with a website design. Is that correct?
Well, actually, I think that it's, we're more focused on, is a good idea that Councilmember Sykes raised, and I think that it, the, us being aware of that, we're, you know, we need to look at making our website user-friendly and being able to provide flexibility. And with the issue that he raised, I think that's something that we certainly can incorporate.
Our Mayor Protam Sykes.
The La Puente, if I remember correctly, is Go Request, is the system that they use.
That's correct.
Councilmember Toma.
I think this is, it's a good idea to check into the mobile phone applications. I do think it's a good idea to start, at the very least, with our website person, since we are designing our website, and to see if there can be some sort of application that people can use. I thought the same thing, that it would be good to have a place, take a photograph with our mobile phone for, because I've seen graffiti spots in different places, and I thought like, that'd be, there's probably an easier way than taking a picture and then emailing, something more direct, they could get the GPS coordinates, whatnot, et cetera, that automatically does it. So I think it's a very good idea. So I think this is, this is a good idea to study, and I just think that it would be good to start with the website process, and if for some reason there's a conflict with not being able to use that, then maybe go out towards other smartphone applications if the web, if the website can't handle that. But I do agree with the thrust of this, if that's what you want to do.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion is to go forward with that study and see how we can incorporate that program into our website.
Okay. We have a motion to look at the app and see how we incorporate it into the website. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? That's a strange one. I'm assuming that's a 5-0. Okay, that's 5-0. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember comments? Any comments from everybody? Councilman Toma.
Yes, I had a couple of things to report back to the council and to the public. One was the, that we had our first, at least my first, school board's liaison subcommittee meeting on March 12th. We, I'm the representative, Councilman Warshaw is the, is the alternate, we were both, we were both there. The purpose of the meeting was to bring together representatives from the various local school districts that serve West Covina, and to address matters of mutual interest to the city and the school districts. We discussed various topics, including addressing an interest from the school districts to have school resource officers at the high schools, location of crossing guards, and the enhanced crosswalks throughout West Covina, general overview of school safety, and update with respect to the Orange Wood Soccer Complex and the continued need to use Edgewood School after the complex is opened, the use of the Cameron Schools restrooms on the weekends with respect to the use of those fields and facilities by the West Covina Girls' Softball League, and update from the school districts on the California Career Technical Education Program. And we scheduled another meeting for May 7th, 2014. Before I move on, is there something that Councilman Warshaw wanted to add to that?
I just wanted to add that I thought it was a very good meeting, and I'm glad that all of the school districts in the city participated. What I would like to add is I would like to, although there were some board members from some of the school districts there, there were few from some, and I would like to see board member, additional board members there because I thought it was very fruitful, and it could move things quicker if they had been there.
The other thing that I wanted to report back was the first meeting of various community service groups in the city that was organized by city staff. They did a great job on this one, as well as the school board's committee meeting. This meeting with various community service groups was held on March 19th with service groups and nonprofit organizations. The purpose of the meeting was to bring together many of the civic and volunteer organizations in our community, discuss possibilities of partnering, sharing information, resources, combining efforts to benefit the community. We had over 15 groups represented, including the Lions Club, the Kiwanis Club, both West Covina Rotary Clubs, the Emblem Club, Women's Club of West Covina, American Cancer Society, West Covina Beautiful, the West Covina MDA Committee, Hurst Ranch, San Gabriel Valley Chapter, the NAACP, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Greater West Covina Business Association, Plaza West Covina, local school districts, and some of the larger churches serving West Covina. It's my understanding from staff that, you know, there will probably be additional groups that we'll think of that ought to be involved in that as well as participants. So we had a, there was a positive meeting. The city discussed several things, including a possible participation as a host town for the 2015 Special Olympics, which was already discussed tonight, the opportunity to participate... the 2015 Special Olympics, which was already discussed tonight, the opportunity to participate in the city's Adopt a Park program. We discussed the possibility of informing West Covina residents of future community programs organized by these various groups through the city's website and the Discover newsletter, as well as the concept of developing a Community Service Day where civic groups and other nonprofit organizations might partner together in the fall of 2014 to promote volunteerism and giving back to our community by working on various service projects that benefit the city and its residents. A number of the service groups also just updated the entire group in terms of the activities that they were planning throughout the city, such as the Night on the Town by the Lions Club and other such events, and scheduled, the staff scheduled another meeting, the next meeting for June 18th of 2014.
Okay. Thank you. Any other council member comments?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the earthquake we had last Friday. For the most part, West Covina, I think, held up pretty well. I don't think there was any major structural damages or major issues, but it is a time that we all need to prepare ourselves. And I know our city staff probably has already, or if they're not, put something on the website for preparation. We all want to make sure we have all the emergency numbers, and we talk to our neighbors and make sure that we're all up to speed. I don't know if the new council members have been briefed on the Emergency Operations Center. We need to make sure that they're up to speed on that because you will be involved in a major emergency, so that's something we need to do too. But for the most part, I want to thank our public safety and city staff for their response. The response that I got through the emails was that there was very limited damage, but that's not to say something can't happen later tonight or tomorrow or whenever, but we need to be prepared, so. With that, if there's no other comments, so, except, city manager?
Yes, just to add on to that, I just want to indicate that due to the recent earthquake, the city will be updating, you know, our website as well as flyers as far as to inform residents how to prepare for earthquakes, as well as other disasters. With respect to the EOC, the Emergency Operation Command Center, we will be providing council with training, as well as staff of an emergency, and how we deal with emergencies, to plan for potential disasters. And so we'll be planning for that, and that will be coming forward in the very near future.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Moved by Toma, second by Mayor Protim, Sykes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries 5-0.